I think we all know him, but Gavin is the CEO of Essex County Council. So welcome back to LGE Gavin.
Thank you so much.
So we've asked you today just to share some ideas and experiences on the theme of interpretation and understanding of complex challenges. In your role as a senior leader, you must face situations where you don't feel, you know, enough to make a good judgment or where you need to gather more data or more perspectives. And as that's sort of been the theme of the first two modules, we wanted to ask you to share your thoughts on how you go about that, how you approach this as a leader. So I know that you've got some experiences and stories to share, just to let you know everyone that we are recording this session. So if you want to watch it again, and so we can share it with those that weren't able to join us today. We're going to hear from Gavin first for about 15, about 15 minutes Gavin, 15, 20 minutes. And then we'll open up to questions from you all participants. So do you be thinking about questions that you've got as you listen to Gavin? And Gavin, you might also want to ask folks some questions too, I expect. So yeah, without further ado, I will hand over to you. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much Naomi and hello everyone. It's nice to see you all virtually. I love speaking in front of LGE because you know, I was one of the first commissioners of the programme and fundamentally believe in the development of talent. When old people like me have gone, it's the young talent that I'm looking at on this screen that will take over. And hopefully the difference that I'm looking to see over time is those kind of next gen leaders that are much more adaptive in their leadership are able to think far more around the system in which they operate and the part that they play within a wider system and how you can leverage that to get better results and outcomes for what we're all here to do, which is to serve people well. So that's the context, if you like, why I embrace leading Greater Essex. And I was very, very fortunate, well, it must be about 15 years ago now, where I had a lot of personal investment in my own leadership that, and I'll share the story that relates to that, that I think for me was perhaps the most impactful change in my own career in taking me from a competent leader, I guess, to perhaps somebody that is much more comfortable working in a systems space, collaborating, building strong relationships between people and in some cases convening resource to help solve a problem. Maybe that's the context of some of the stories that I will tell you. Now, I will recommend you a podcast, by the way, actually there's two I follow. One is Rest is History, but that's got nothing to do with this. But the other one, funny enough, is called Young Again with Kirsty Young, if you know Kirsty Young, brilliant broadcaster. And she interviews people that have achieved things in their career. And then she asks them to reflect back in their career with what they've learnt now, how would they do things differently when they were younger? And I suppose in me that caused quite a little bit of, I had a lot of driving in my, in my job. So I get a lot of chance to listen to these things and do some personal reflection. And I think when I was a much younger person and in not such a senior position, I started as a clerical officer actually in British Telecom all those hundreds of years ago. I look back and think, yeah, there was a brashness, there was an overconfidence, there was a simplicity to the way I made decisions, often not based on data, but more about assumptions. And actually, I think my overconfidence probably made it difficult for me to accept genuine learning. And it was only at that point, I was very fortunate to get a coach called Saul Davis. And some of you may or may not have heard of him, but he really helped me think about, actually, by this time I was much more senior in the organisation, that many puzzles that I solve in my day job, now I'm higher up the hierarchy, more than become problems than they do puzzles. And I don't know whether that's a concept you've explored on LG yet, but effectively, overly simplistically, puzzles are those things where there's a clearly defined problem and often there is a clear solution. Might be technically complicated, but it's quite straightforward. Problems tend to be more where there's much more ambiguity about data, about information, what's the nature of the problem? And also in terms of many different ways how you might approach solving it. And it was at this time I started to understand that. And the timing for it was perfect because I was Chief Exec of Swindon Borough Council at this time. And I decided to deal with a very difficult issue, which was around troubled families. At that point, we called them chaotic families. So you recognise these families, many of you may work with them. These are where you've got real problems in the families. You might have siblings with different parents. There might be domestic violence in the family, might be alcoholism, drug use, much crime often created. And they were intergenerational. You were basically seeing is that what happened in these families just carried on through the different generations. And all of us as partners, of course, were tending to see the same families as the people that were representing to us as the highest demand. So we wanted to try to tackle it and I took the lead on that. I had no idea how to approach this. This was the most complex thing that I had ever understood, but there was a shared sense among police colleagues, for example, within social work, that the way we're, we're working with some of these families was not helping. And actually, many of us didn't actually enjoy working with those families. Personally, white middle class boy, I had never experienced the kind of chaos that many of these families in their own lives lead. So I was quite intimidated about how I was going to approach this, knowing that what I'd learnt up till now was simply not going to help me solve this problem or set of problems. So the things that I learned that helped me solve the problem, which I'll share with you, was first of all, being open to learning. Now, if you're overly confident, sometimes you reject the sense of learning because you think that no one can teach you anything. So I had to get over that bit first. So I had to develop a genuine, authentic sense of humility about actually making yourself vulnerable to not knowing things. Deep listening, now many of you know, men are not great listeners at the best of times, but I had to really get to grips with deep listening. I'm going to give you some very practical examples how this was important in a second. Productive and authentic relationships with other people. And a willingness to collaborate. So if you walk away from this session thinking, well, what are the kind of facets that have helped me to be a reasonable player within the system? I would point to these, there are many other things. So going to work with 15, it was 15 of our most troubled families. The first thing is going into that challenge, I was making, we were all making enormous assumptions as to why they were living the lives that they led. And it was only when we spent time with those families and listened to them, I mean truly listened to them, did we realise that nearly all of the assumptions we had made were completely wrong. The fact that we didn't think that these families had any sense of ambition for their kids, completely wrong. They didn't have the language to often articulate it. And in many ways, the way that public services had interacted with them was to never give them space to really reflect on their own lives and to be listened to. It was more of a transactional set of interactions that all of us did. I remember speaking to one of the police officers who said he hated going to visit these families, who had literally run up, up the drive, dropped something for the letterbox and effectively run off again because, you know, he wasn't helping them, it wasn't an enjoyable experience. And the last thing that has really made an impression on me, obviously, the court system, the criminal system is a very common occurrence with many of these, many of these families. For you or I, that would be a very traumatic event, I like to think. For many of these families, it was a social event. It was when the broader families came together. Now, who would have thought all of those things when trying to work with a family to support their issues? So the change started to happen when we as partners spent time with humility, actually listening. And there's a very important piece about power in this. So I'm acutely aware that I have an awful amount of organisational power. If you're a police officer and wearing a uniform, that immediately gives a sense of power. And actually, if you really want to make change happen within a system, actually, you have to give power. You can't lord it effectively because otherwise, A, why do people want to work with you? But equally, they'll feel intimidated in working with you. So, I mean, very briefly, I know we're a little bit short of time, but very briefly, we basically embedded researchers to live with these families for about six months to know everything about their lives. We gave them camcorders to record their lives. And that was the beginning of the change because actually we had a much richer picture of A, how they lived their lives and in their own words, what their problems, their ambitions and dreams were. Now, we could only have done this and approached this project if we had previously developed great relationships with our partners. So if there's any, I mean, police officers today, I think the way the police work feels very different and very much more positive, by the way, than perhaps 15 years ago when I started this project. Because for, I remember this one, this is one very troubled young lad, it was probably causing the most anti-social behaviour in the whole of the community, a police officer showing him how to pin a roof on a shed, which might strike you as a bit, well, we'd expect a police officer to do that, but actually that's what that kid needed. He'd never had a role model in his life to learn from. So we could only do that because we as leaders had invested in ourselves and our relationships. So I was very friendly with the divisional commander, and I don't mean friendly on a transactional level, a deep respect and understanding of what we were both in public service for. And it's through developing those relationships, does it create the art of possible, in my view, to make something special happen. Now, I could spend weeks talking about this family life programme. It became a national travel troubled families programme, some of you are familiar with that as well. But the point I really wanted to, to bring out here, we could never have started to make real change happen in those families if we hadn't invested in deep trusting relationships with others that were interested in solving a problem, if we hadn't opened ourselves up to real deep listening and a willingness to learn and to suspend judgement for a period of time. Moving on, and you might want to ask me lots of questions around that. Another great area, I think of, that I've experienced in Essex, probably many of you might have been involved in that, of course, is during Covid. Is when, and it was through the local resilience forum brilliantly chaired by Chief Constable BJ Harrington and Rick from the fire service as well, they alternated between it. And of course, our work there to try to help vulnerable people either get food to them, to create a whole database of volunteers that are prepared to go out and help people to deal with the issue of people coming out of hospitals, offer with Covid coming into care homes, required an enormous amount of working with partners across the system. And what made it easier was the fact that we had a clearly defined common purpose. So often the challenge I find working in the system is negotiating and defining what it is that you're really trying to achieve, so that people can almost make an emotional attachment to it. In a way, it was easy with Covid because of course it happened so quickly, didn't it? And it was the national language, so we're able to come together. But what was fascinating about that, because I think we kept coming back to what are we here for, there were tense relationships during that period. You know, you had senior players of health, police, local authorities, districts and county, so on and so forth. And at times, things got quite challenging because different partners had different objectives to achieve. I'm particularly thinking of the movement of people from hospitals into care homes. There's an enormous pressure both for hospital staff as it was for social care staff as well. And we had some difficult issues, but we got through them because actually we knew that there was a common thing that we had to achieve was to protect vulnerable people in the best way that we could. And I think through that work, it built a deep sense of trust and strong relationship between us that I see even now still in place and has put us, you know, I wouldn't wish Covid on anybody obviously in terms of that. But if there was an upside, that sense of a common purpose for which we could all gather made it all worthwhile and I think really, really helped us as a leadership community, I would say. I'm going to give you one last example, two actually, a bit close to home one of them, of where systems leadership to deal with a problem would have been absolutely the right approach, but was not the approach adopted. And many of you may know that I'm a government commissioner in both Slough and Thurrock councils as well, which if you don't know, both councils that found themselves in incredibly difficult situations and declared what's called a section 114, which in local authority terms, we're not allowed to go bust, but you declare 114, which is effectively going bust, which means you cannot balance your budget. So you're bringing commissioners to help them and that's what I do, Slough and Thurrock. The money problem in failed councils is just a manifestation of a much deeper rooted problem, much of what we're talking about here. So if I take Slough, for example, they had a real problem. Yes, it was financially based, but the organisation was not working, it was not connected to its partners in the system, it'd become very internally focused. And the discussions, the culture, the leadership was very poor in that organisation. To attempt to solve it, and this is public by the way, so I'm not giving a comment, is the chief exec launched the most incredible restructure of the council, putting everybody on notice whilst they're all in lockdown during Covid and brought in a consulting company that had never worked in local government before. There was no talking to the organisation, no talking with the organisation, no collaboration and no listening. So as this, as this work was taking place, many people were saying, this is wrong, this is not right. If they objected to it, to be blunt, they were pushed out of the organisation. That's what happened at Slough. So the complex problem there actually would have been much better solved working with the organisation and with partners to address some of the issues. The response was simply two or three people at the most senior level in the organisation, working on their own, disconnected from everybody else in the system, and it ended in disaster. And to a same similar degree, it's what happened at Thurrock as well. Very different situation in terms of restructure, but they had a major financial issue. They didn't want to deal with it in the way that they should. It was a puzzle originally because they were overspending in some areas, but they refused to make some of the, what I recall, more simple but challenging decisions about, you know, priorities, reducing spend, perhaps transformation. They chose instead to ignore that and look for a silver bullet over the hills, which in this case was a crazy set of investments in solar farms and all the rest of the stuff. And the issue there, of course, is that they never saw themselves as part of a bigger system where the system would have been willing to be, to help them. You know, a system within themselves, but a system within the broader system of Essex as well. And again, similar to Slough, two or three people took it amongst themselves to devise a strategy which was not socialised. If people raised concerns about it, as many councillors did actually, it was just squashed and ignored and it ended in disaster. So what were the common features of the leadership, in my view, in that space in Slough and Thurrock? Well, definitely not humility. It was top-down driven with no sense of allowing challenge and no sense of open to learning to different ideas as well. Absolutely no listening whatsoever. That was clearly not there. Relationships, both within their organisation and within the system, frankly, were appalling. Actually, there was no sense of connecting to a broader system as well and no willingness to collaborate, really the antithesis of everything I said. So when you read things like High Fit, that I think you're doing as well, and the Stacey model, I don't know if you've done that yet Naomi, have you done that yet with the LG cohort?
Not yet.
Not yet, yeah, you'll enjoy that. That's a very good model, actually. One of the things that the Greater Essex Programme does is help to give you a narrative and some models and some words that you can use to frame the kind of, the kind of problem solving that I'm trying to describe here. So I'll pause in a second. I know it's a quick whistle chop story, but what I wanted to share with you, I'm talking to you now as somebody that is more practice and system leadership, but I wasn't born that way. I can assure you, I had to learn it and I had to go through a lot of discomfort and a lot of personal reflection. We talked about my guitar playing, you know, I played guitar since I was 16, by the way. And for years I didn't develop because I was so arrogant that I thought, well, I can't possibly show I'm not as good a guitarist as somebody else. So I was not open to learning. And it was only that point when I took a coach who lives in Billerica, by the way, that suddenly the world changed and saw learning as a gift from which, you know, I sound like someone I'm preaching at you now, doesn't it? But shall I pause then Naomi? I don't know if that has any help or not, but probably more help through the questions that might come through.
Thank you so much Gavin, super interesting. I could definitely keep listening to your question, your stories for a long time, but I'm sure folks have got questions for you. I thought that I might kick us off with a question from me first. So folks, if you've got questions for Gavin, whilst he's responding to me, then please put your hand up. You can also use the chat. If you're feeling shy, you can use the chat, type your questions and we'll, we'll come to you. But I know that you'll want to make the most of this opportunity. So I'm going to ask mine and then I'll come to you Lee first. So Gavin, you, you mentioned listening a lot, the kind of the importance of deep listening and the kind of the impact of the, the sort of failure to listen that you talked about in Slough and Thurrock. And so I guess I was wondering, what does that look like to you now in your kind of senior leadership role? Because I am assuming that you don't get the opportunity to go and kind of do deep listening with kind of families or citizens very often. But yeah, what does it look like to you to do that on a day-to-day basis?
So great question. And no, sadly, I don't get time to do that actually, as much as I might like to do. But often at my own, it's quite easy when you're at the top of the tree, if you like, the leader of the organisation, to blurt out first, I know what you want to do, we want to do this. And in many ways, that is my natural style, I have to say. But in my leadership meetings I have, for example, I deliberately give time for others to speak and to hear what they have to say. It needs guiding sometime because, you know, there is, you don't want to, you don't want to abdicate the convening role of, of running a leadership team. But generally, many of the issues that we're faced with the leadership team are really highly complex. And I've got a table of very skilled people, complementary skills. So if I don't give them time to share their thinking and a little bit of challenging through open questions, I didn't mention questions in this session, but that's so key, the ability to ask a good question. I think that's how, how in practice it plays out for me, Naomi. I think the other thing, when I'm working in the broader system, how do I phrase this? You don't have to like everybody that you work with. And you don't necessarily have to respect every aspect of their leadership, but everybody has something to contribute. And I think if you can get over that bit and value anything that someone brings forward, then I think that's how I tried to lead within the system. So enough.
There'll be more. Lee, you've got a question for Gavin?
Yeah, thank you. So in the first example, I was really interested in when you talked about embedding researchers to live with the troubled families for six months. I found that really innovative actually, but I would imagine there were some real challenges around both the financial aspect of having done that and from a risk assessment point of view. So I was just interested just to hear a little bit more about that and how you achieved that, how the idea came about.
Yes, great point, Lee. So actually, it came about with a discussion with the then Divisional Commander, a guy called Paul Havlick, since retired from the police, actually. That's how it sort of started, us both talking about, we're seeing the same people, you know, you're seeing it from a kind of criminal justice perspective and I'm seeing it from social work. We had to deliver a specific budget for this programme. So I couldn't do this within the existing funding of the organisation. I had to set aside a particular, and I was running effectively, and your point about risk, Lee, I was effectively running two systems in parallel with this. So what, whilst we had this thing called the team around the families, and by the way, the families recruited the teams, by the way, we put the power in their hands to choose who they wanted to work with them. I was still running traditional social work model with them to manage the risk side that you described. That was really quite tricky, by the way. And note for your diaries or note for your books, by the way, I worked with two incredible people for this, some of you may know, one was called Charlie Ledbetter and one was called Hillary Cotum. And you can read, if you read Hillary's book Radical Help, that will, it documents her story a little bit more in there. But that's, so the risk side was managed by minding the gap, Lee, in that way, maintaining the same kind of interaction, but then also resourcing a different function over here. The big learning from that, by the way, when you're driving change in this way, and I made a mistake, there was an interesting article in The Guardian about this work that we did, is that suddenly my language, our language became, oh, the new world is fantastic. Isn't this great? And actually, the people left in the old world, still developing social work in the way that they did, actually found that very offensive and it almost implied, that means everything I've done in the past then didn't, wasn't right before. So you have to be really careful when you're disrupting and making this kind of change, that you don't leave people behind as I did. I hope that answers your question, Lee.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks Gavin and thanks for the name check for Hillary Cotum's book, which is a kind of a definitely a highly recommended read. Paul, you have a question?
Hi Gavin, that was a really good runway into what I was about to ask actually. So I think you touched on listening and making people feel that they can listen and empowering them to ask questions and to listen. When I've tried to make system changes in the past, I've often found that the listening aspect of it is, is more achievable. The bit that I think a lot of places struggle with is feeling secure when change is happening. So there's, I found a lot of, especially in the public sector, protectionism over if we change things and my budget's going to change, my staff's going to change, that sort of thing. And while there's receptiveness to ideas, there's often a lot of hesitancy to make those changes out of a fear of that lack of security. Have you found ways to reassure people in that and get people to be more receptive by feeling safe in participating in these processes?
I mean, it's a great question because it's the old thing goes that people don't like change and in reality, they do like change, but they don't like losing what you've just described, Paul. That's, that's the thing. People are very positive about change if they see the benefits both for them and for the change that you're trying to make as well. So there's no, there's no what I call silver bullet on this and I don't profess to be the best change agent in the world that's always got it right, absolutely not. But I'll give you one example where I was, that was, I didn't do it actually, but one of my team did. We brought in Capitaine to my previous organisation. And of course, the staff were not very happy about this. Many of them were going to be turped into this system. And again, my language at the time, isn't it great, we're making great progress? And I wasn't checking in with staff about how they were feeling about it. So I was banging on about, isn't this marvellous? This is fantastic, isn't it? And then eventually the feedback came to me and says, no, we're bleeding isn't, it doesn't feel good, it doesn't feel safe, I don't know what my future is. So we developed, for example, we're using the change curve, an emotional way of checking in with staff all of the time where they were on the change curve, which allowed us then to change our nature of our messaging, depending where cohorts of staff were on the change curve. So don't tell everybody how brilliant it is, as they're still down in the deep heart of the change curve, you see what I mean? So we learned to customise from an emotional, an emotional perspective, our engagement with staff. That's, that's how we tried to address it, Paul. And I just think actually, also being very honest, people don't like leaders who deceive them, in my experience, having deceived myself many times when I wasn't at the top of the tree.
Thank you both for the questions and the responses. I'm sure there are more questions out there, so, but I'm going to fill the gap while folks are kind of just mulling on what you've heard. Yeah, Gavin, did you want to add?
Yeah, so I did a bit on deep listening, just something I wanted to share with you that's had a major impact on me. Like many of you, we have different staff networks. In Essex, we have a lot of them. We did, it was called the BAME network, it's now called Eden. And as a leadership team, the corporate leadership team, going back a couple of years ago, we did a number of deep listening sessions with people from then the BAME network. And each session lasts 90 minutes and we were not allowed to say a word. Not a, have you ever tried that? Tried doing it for five minutes, let alone for 90 minutes? We just let them speak about their life experiences. I think it's fair to say, I think I liked things. I think it's fair to say, I think I liked the thing, I've always been in touch with the inequality, if you like, for, for many different people. But my sense of what those people had really gone through in their lives, that you and I probably wouldn't have noticed, only came about by doing this for 90 minutes and just listening and then reflecting separately. So as a start for real change, I would always advocate for very deep listening.
Gavin, that, that really speaks to the question that I, I wanted to ask you, which was, obviously, we, we, we kind of face increasing amounts of data in, in our working lives of all kinds. And I guess I, I was interested in your, your sort of take on how we manage and, and balance the kind of the, the, the quant data and the qualitative data and what's the, how, how do you manage that kind of overwhelming amount of data and decide what's, what's the most important to pay attention to?
And we've had more data in the last 12 months than we've had in the entire time of human beings on planet Earth. It's extraordinary, isn't it? That's the amount of data we have available to us. I'm a passionate believer in data for public services and using it. There's a level of complexity, as we all know, because it's not our data, it's people who work with us data. So you need a kind of moral compass for how you use data. But in ECC, we, with the police, I have to say, and University of Essex, we set up this thing called ECTA, which is all about bringing public data together to inform on a better evidence-based some of our decisions. However, going back to the family life stuff that I spoke to you about, quantitative data like that, taken out of context of real life experience and where people live, is fairly meaningless and actually quite dangerous if you only rely on that. So as leaders, like you said, Naomi, I can't unfortunately spend time in communities like I might have done a few years ago. But I need a way of getting a genuine qualitative sense of what is life like for people who live in these places. It's why I'm a fan of collaborate, by the way, because I thought that's exactly what the whole mindset is around. You know, public services, working alongside in places with people. And it's only if you get that can you actually build a richer picture of what the real challenges are and how you can be of help to people effectively. So data, yes, absolutely. It's quite challenging in a political environment because many politicians work from belief rather than they do from evidence. So that's quite a challenge as a public sector leader to kind of balance the belief system with an evidential base as well.
I'm sure there's a lot more we could go into in that, but I see there are two hands up, so I'm going to hand you back to Mike first and then it'll be Elsa.
Hi Gavin and everyone. It's a fascinating presentation that you gave, it was really, really good. I've got a two-part question and, and the first is, on the face of it, there are many, many problems that could be addressed through a kind of partnership, systems change approach. Far more many problems than anyone's got the resource to have a go at. And I was just wondering what advice you've got for anyone who could be at lots of, you know, different levels of the system. But how, how do you make a personal choice on which, you know, which, which areas to go for?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a really, there's no easy answer to this one, Mike, I can tell you. So there's a combination of things. I mean, there's things that as an individual leader, I might be particularly passionate about. And I'm particularly passionate actually about young kids having a decent chance in life. So there's a little bit about what I drive and there'll be other leaders that will have things that drive them as well. But, you know, there, there's a negotiation, particularly within a system, there's a negotiation. I mean, being a systems leader or being part of a system, the art of negotiation is critical. Because there's no point in me having something that I want to achieve if I haven't negotiated that with other pillars in the system that have something to bring to the table. So there has to be a degree of pragmatism, I think, Mike, in terms of what it is you're going to go for. You know, there's tools that you might learn on LGA that help you determine, you know, complexity versus simplicity versus cost versus return, you know, there's kind of models that can help you alight to that. But there is nothing like for me getting a, a group of like-minded leaders and talking through and getting to something of which everybody can alight to. Because when people are emotionally attached to an issue, even people at the top of the tree, they are human beings, you know. That, that's when you're, that's when you're going to make real progress, when people really want to make a difference. I think that'd be my answer, Mike.
Fantastic. Thanks for that. And sorry, the second, second related question was something around culture and something around budget and structure, but we, you know, we've got, we're all in an organisation, we're usually all in a team or a function of some kind that has its own objectives, priorities. In order to be able to do this kind of systems change work, I guess there has to be some sort of cultural permission to use some of your resource on other things that aren't, you know, defined or functionally, team-wise, organisationally. Slack resources, that kind of thing. And I was just wondering if you could reflect on organisations that you've been in where that's, where you've been empowered to work like this and others where you haven't. And again, what sort of advice you've got for, for people at different levels in terms of how they can make that a possibility for the, for the staff that they manage or lead?
Yeah, these are cracking questions, I have to say. So I'll bet and I guess my leadership team, you know. So again, no, no simple answer to this. So give me a clue, Mike, as to, I'm going to throw it back at you in a sense. What's your thinking? What, what, what do you think in terms of what my answer should be? That's a bit cheeky, isn't it?
It is a bit cheeky, yeah. Well, I, I, I draw my, on, on, on previous experiences, not, not at the council, because I'm quite new to the council, but where there have been periods where I've been sort of set free to develop working relationships. And, and as an, I'm an evaluator, but my role has often crossed into project development, project management in order to help understand how things need to fit together to do a good evaluation, if you see what I'm saying.
I do.
And sometimes it's worked really well, but sometimes I, I felt like it's out of neglect because people haven't had the time to manage me. Do you know what I mean? So it's, it's given me that freedom and I, I've produced my best results when that's happened. But there's a difference between that sort of agency neglect and actually an agent's being proactive and empowering and really understanding what this is about and, and, and giving you that pedestal to, to do that type of work. And at the council, I feel much more freed up to do that, 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 that people want that. But, but I wonder whether there's more, more that could be done to sort of really make it explicit.
I love your answer, by the way. And sorry for being cheeky, but the reason why I wanted to throw it back on you, and I think you've given the answer that I would like to hear, is that actually, we're all constrained to a greater lesser degree, even I'm constrained. Don't think that I've got a free hand to do whatever I want, because I haven't, absolutely not. We're all constrained. And of course, the current financial position for all of us, many ways, makes that even harder or could do. But my rather glib response to that is the biggest change comes from what you can do yourself, of what's in with you. I've seen remarkable, see, I don't think of leadership as a hierarchical thing. You might say that's an easy thing for me to say, isn't it? But I don't. I think leadership can come from anywhere. And I've seen it come from anywhere. I've seen it come from within communities, from real people with real lives. Leadership, people suddenly taking control of their own lives. And if I had to give, you know, it sounds a bit clear, but if I had to give some advice, you are the agent of your own change. If there's something that fires you up, you'll find a reason and a way of doing it, actually. Through your securing other people to get behind an idea, whatever it will be, you'll find a way of doing it. And that's the biggest thing that I can say to you, I think. It's easy for us to feel the weight of organisations on us that squash out the entrepreneurs and energy. Don't fight for, you know, anyway, I'm telling you to be all anarchists, Mike.
What better, what better message could there be, Gavin? I'm going to squeeze in one more question from Elsa because she's had her hand up for a while. So Elsa, away you go. And I think this will probably be the last one.
Thank you, Naomi, and thanks for a great session, Gavin. I just wanted to ask about the, the previous topic that you went on in terms of the change management side of things and being a change agent. And, and I've been to some, I've done some listening in sessions and, and I really like your deep listening idea. And I might actually put that to practice. But it's, it's the next step which I was thinking of really is about how do we, how do you showcase that you've deep listened? And how do you, well, part of listening is also telling people that you've listened and you're, you're responding to it as well. So how do you showcase that?
Yes, again, Elsa, in a way, you've answered the question, I think. There's a responsibility in deep listening, in my view. If you are, you know, it's almost like a contract with people. If you say, I want you, you know, to spend an hour with me, just telling your story or whatever. The minute they've said that, personally, I think you have a sense of responsibility to demonstrate that you have heard. And that can manifest in very different ways, of course. I'm, I, by like, by nature, I tend to be a bit of a rescuer, so I always want to kind of solve people's problems for them. But of course, that isn't always the right response. But I think the authenticity that goes along with deep listening is by what you then do subsequently. So, you know, for example, if I take the deep listening that we did with BAME, hopefully if you work with an ECC, you will see since that deep listening, we have done a lot more to highlight the, the case of inequality for many people around that. If many of our policies as a council, which we as a leadership team have driven through, has been as a direct result of what people have told us about what life is like for them, either as an employee in the organisation more, but more generally. So perhaps the bit I didn't bring out, Elsa, is if you are, if you are going to go into a deep space, space of deep listening, I think that brings with it a deep sense of responsibility as well. How you deal with that responsibility has to be down to you.
Thank you. Thanks, Gavin.
Thanks, Elsa.
Folks, it's just about three o'clock. So I'm really sorry if you didn't get a chance to ask a question. Then hold on to it for our next session with Gavin, which hopefully will come before the end of the programme. We hope to get you back. But just want to say thank you on behalf of everyone on the call. Can tell everyone's found it really interesting and valuable. And hopefully, Gavin, some of the questions that you've been asked have also given you some insight into kind of what people are thinking about on the programme, which I'm sure is helpful to you.
Absolutely. Naomi, I'm very happy. I know some people have had their hands up, had the chance. If they want to send me a question via email or something like that, I'm more than happy to respond to them as well. If that helps, I'm happy to do that.
Lovely, thanks. And when I can see you've got your hand up, so if you want to get in touch with Cara, I'm sure she can field a question for you. Thanks so much, everybody. We'll see most of you on Wednesday.